That's a good solution is just AAA, pick it up and deliver it to their parking lot. It'll go.
I'll tell them that.
They won't take it back, I promise that.
On your next line down from the not generally driven, what exactly is that sentence pertaining to?
Ideas which are not generally normally used, it's an absolute word, it's a, it's a sense of art that whoever your code enforcement officer will use an example of. You've got a residential neighborhood and you've got a hundred lobster traps lining the front yard that are just unsightly and that person, the code enforcement would say, wait a second, why are these unsightly things hanging out in a person's front yard? It would be up to the code board then to determine whether or not that is generally or normally accepted within the particular premises. It may not be offensive at all in a, in a more of a rural setting, but if it's in a neighborhood, all of a sudden, and I'm using that as an example because lobster traps really aren't used in Creighton, Kentucky, right? But a lobster trap in Maine would be commonplace for everywhere. So that's up to, and part of that is giving discretion to your code enforcement officer. If they see something that's not typically in the actual nuisance code itself, they can, they can find us catch-all phrase. Now, you can remove it and then what would happen is, is you'll probably find a situation like the pig situation we had earlier this year where, well, it's not anywhere. Well, what is it? That's a catch-all phrase.
But would that, would that line fall into across the street? Say I have a big John Deere tractor. I, I do not use it at my particular premises, but it could be leaned that way.
Definitely not. I mean, I don't think that any way should perform that would constitute a nuisance. But I think that ultimately you're gonna have to, you guys are gonna give some discretion through this to the board and they have to make a determination of what sight leaning was not.
Alex had another question. What, for example, if there was a garage in the city that ran tow trucks or impound lot and they stored the vehicles there and some of them from wrecks that are inoperable, some of them have, probably have expired license and are generally not being driven? What would you do in an incident like that? Would that be in violation?
No, it's a zoning code issue. So like you can't have operable cars and their licenses, et cetera, in a residential neighborhood. So you couldn't have a salvage yard or a dump or something to that effect. The scenario you just advised was actually, it would be a permitted use, probably within your industrial zone. And that's what it's for, is to have those types of vehicles that are there, impounded in some cases, restored. So maybe in compliance with the zoning orders, there's no issue there.
More on your nuisance, Alex. We have a question for you on the, of all the definitions, a lot of the definitions, but should there be a definition of agricultural and a definition of a farm?
Andy, can I go back real quick to just this two pager? Anything you guys seen that doesn't, I mean, this is, please, I mean, this is, I mean, I'm, I'm not omnipotent. I mean, I, I mean lots of mistakes. If there's something that just doesn't fit right in this community, strike it. We can always edit it in terms of a real problem. But I mean, like the one firewood which is not neatly stacked in a compact manner, I mean, that, that doesn't apply, then we strike it, we knock it out. Because a lot of people just toss their firewood in a big old circular or regular pattern. It's just designed to at least have a tool for your code enforcement to be able to.
One of the things in general, and you did a hell of a job on this. One of the things that stimulated in my mind is a future activity for the council and the city is, we probably need to get a procedure on how we grandfather non-compliant properties within.
You already have, you already have. It's in your zoning code. Yeah, they're all, the ones that are operating and, and, and.
Okay, to that point, if we have it, then maybe we ought to review that and understand how we're going to apply it. Because I think that, I think with a robust strict enforcement of this, it'll raise issues on non-compliant properties within various zones that should either be grandfathered or be made to adhere to the zoning ordinance. And how do we apply that? I don't think that's well-known here among the council. So this, it's gonna stimulate more work, but not doing it will stimulate even more work.
No doubt.
Yeah.
The, the way that non, in, in guys, zoning topic is, is one that we spend days on, but we'll just real quickly on the non-conforming use. Before zoning was originated, there was lots of businesses that it shouldn't have been where they were because it doesn't make sense to have a pig farm next to a residential neighborhood. However, zoning comes in, as long as a pig farm is there before zoning or grandfathered in or non-conforming. But to Joe's point, what happens is with non-conforming is that if, and I don't remember if it's ten years or if it's lower in the city of Creighton, but if a city ignores the non-conforming use for an excess of a period of time, often it's a long time. It's not like five minutes, but let's say 10 years, then it becomes a non-conforming use. So if that pig farm would have come about after the zoning had originated, it's now non-conforming and would have to be code enforced in order to be able to kick them out. If you don't, then that pig farm becomes, eventually becomes a non-conforming use, which is permissible, which is a real problem.
Right, so formalizing that grandfathering is probably important.
It is.
And I've also seen things like grandfathering by bloodline, if all remains in the family, it's okay, but if it ever changes property three generations down the road, now it becomes under the banner of whatever the prevailing zoning is. So how we do that, I don't know. I've got a few opinions with a little bit of experience, but not enough to say how we should do it. But I think with robust enforcement of this nuisance code, if doing nothing will create more work. So I'd suggest down the road, that's a level of activity we ought to figure out how we, how we want to enforce grandfathering and you agree with that now?
No doubt about it. And whoever your code enforcement officer is such an important role for the gatekeeper.
So for instance, I guess there, that would bring up the, on page 13 under number T, about cars being parked on a paved concrete or blacktop surfaces in there. This is a rural owned community, there's a lot of gravel.
I know it.
Dropways.
That would be one of those grandfathered things that were here before, on the building.
Yeah.
I, I just had a case that I litigated on behalf of your PDS where the way that the ordinance read in that particular city, I don't remember if it was Billy or somebody, but they, it was all gravel and they took concrete pavers and put, jacked it to the car up and put pavers under the four tires and said, well, we comply. That's not the meaning of the statute or early ordinance, right? They want it to all be concrete, but literally speaking, they complied. All tires were on concrete. So, you know, we're always gonna have the benefit of clever ways, but if you all think that gravel is permissible, then we can simply change it and say it's gotta either be on gravel, concrete, or.
I do think gravel should be permissible because we, you can park on the street in the harvesters and a lot of these people do, like she said, they have gravel side driveways and things like that for their campers even.
I see it every time I drive down.
Yeah.
And then the question is, is that how do you regulate gravel? A guy taking a bag of gravel, a 20-pound bag and spreading it out and saying, okay, now comply. Where do you, where does it stop? But I'm, I'm all ears. If you guys think gravel needs to be added in there, we can always come back to it if it turns into a problem down the road.
So are you still taking suggestions? Can we still send them to you? We're not going to be telling this.
Uh, we can't do it tonight, but the goal would be if you guys want, I mean.
I have some things I could send to you.
Please, just when you actually have a final, I'd like to get a final version to you all and you guys can look at it and say, yep, and go down the list if you want. Because I could put everybody's suggestions into it and then you guys could all call out, whoever could say, here are my additions that, that Alex and I discussed. If you like them, we'll adopt them, if not, we can add some. Maybe that's probably the best way to do it, to try to move this thing forward.
Alex, I have some more questions for you too. On the, of all the definitions, there's a lot of definitions, but should there be a definition in this of a farm?
Sure.
Or a definition of agricultural?
I can do it.
The, the reasons why is there's some, on page seven, it talked about, oh, we're talking about, where is it at? Down under ordinary public view underneath that, it talked about overgrown grass, any grass weeds or vegetation in excess of eight inches in length except in an agricultural That's one of those things where there needs to be exception, except when you're talking about ornamental grass. Next thing is an agricultural zone. Again, I brought this up last meeting and it didn't get in here, it was a late meeting, but there's places in Creighton that are zoned highway commercial that are growing corn, soybeans and hay, but it's zoned highway commercial and it's still being used as, they're still growing things.
Yeah, you're thinking the same thing I am, that's, that's the grandfathering.
Correct.
Yeah. Is the family farm a bazillion years ago?
There's highway commercial property where they're grazing cows to eat the grass and don't have to cut it. That's one of those, that's one of those things. And if you have 50 acres, do you have to go into your 50 acres and cut the weeds that are over eight inches high in the property of the city limits?
So that, to answer your question, agricultural is of course defined in your zoning code, but if that farm has always been a farm that's in a residential zone, then it would be a non-conforming use because it would have been, if it was truly for agricultural purposes, like cutting hay. Now this guy just owns 50 acres, it does nothing with it, just all weeds growing, you would have a nuisance code there to rescue that situation.
So the, what farmer in particular said something that, I forgot how many acres he said he had, but there's weeds that grow in among his trees around his fenced-in area where he has cows. And he asked if he's supposed to go in there and cut down the weeds in this field where the cows eat, if it gets over that eight inches.
That's completely, I mean, that's not, that's not the tone, that's not, that's not the intent.
He was, he was worried.
That's not the intent of a nuisance code.
Do we have livestock in this?
Animals of the bovine, oven, pork, porkine, caprine, equine, camelide, inservid, it's been all things that I don't know. Including we've got limitation horses, cattle, sheep, swine, goats.
That's just the definitions, that's not saying that they're not allowed to be in the city, correct?
Correct.
I, I don't know how you guys feel about this, but I don't think we have another issue this week with, with two pigs that I tried to handle myself. And I'm telling you, I was losing my mind. We don't need, we need to have something stating that pigs and swines and paw bellies are not allowed inside city limits.
What about the people who have farms inside the city limits?
Well, maybe we could add so much acreage or, or, you know, due to so much acreage. But I mean, in a harvester subdivision?
There you go, I think that's some good wording, inside a subdivision. That would be a good wording.
Are you with me?
If you're doing something like that, because if you outlaw, if you outlaw pigs, there are farms in Creighton, cities like that.
But those are probably in the agricultural zone or grandfathered.
Or grandfathered, okay.
It's permitted.
That's the same.
But, you know.
I like the grandfather word.
Is, is there any restriction here on having like gardens? Okay, so no restrictions on that, okay? So another thing I'm kind of interested in is, I think we're not, I think we need to be careful here not to, you know, overburden our citizens. And, and what I'm thinking is, one thing that's near and dear to me is young families teaching their kids to how to take care of animals and things like that. And I agree with pigs, we don't need any pigs in our subdivision.
Hey, I'm telling you.
But for instance, my daughter has a little chicken coop in the back of her yard and she teaches her children about chickens and she's had several and she's got a fence around and they don't go in anybody's yard. And, and I don't see anything wrong with that. So I hope that our city won't say that you can't have chickens, you know? Maybe we can restrict it in some way.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You don't want it in the front yard.
These, these two pigs are, are running all over Bullock pit.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about the pigs.
Oh, okay.
We're talking about chickens now.
Pigs are destructive.
Yes, they are rooting and they're tearing these people's yards up and everything else.
But, but as far as, you know, some small animals like that, I just don't wanna get into restricting everything to their, you know, families can't teach their children. I don't wanna be picky, I don't wanna, you know, harass our citizens over some of this stuff.
Alex, for foreign appeal, when they come before the nuisance board and they try to fight their case and the nuisance board says, no, you need to do this. I think there needs to be, they should be able to come before the, the city council before they go to the county level to see if they can change or work together.
That's why, that's not why the statute was written that way. It was, it was designed specifically to take the politics out of these type of code enforcement measures. With an independent code enforcement board, they're not elected, so they don't have to make decisions based upon popularity. They make decisions based upon the codes that you guys are implementing. So the statute requires that if you, the code enforcement board, I mean, the legislature must have thought about this, talked about it, I can only imagine how much discussion in the state of Kentucky was over code enforcement. But the statute applies for that reason, they didn't want it coming back to the legislative board because the legislators were constantly running for office, trying to keep people happy in theory, right? So you don't wanna upset your neighbor that, that is upset because he asked to remove his pig. So that way your direct appeal is to a certain court, that's where you go.
So another reason not to make this so strict that you're having to litigate everything.
You got it.
Another thing, Fort Wright had a part of their nuisance thing is, for example, if they had a house in the city limits where there was two shootings and it was rental property and the police responded twice and there's two shootings, the code enforcement, the nuisance part helped the property owner get rid of those problem people because of the shooting. I didn't see anything in here like this.
Yeah, never heard that, but if you want something.
I'll enforce into, again, I gave it to some, I gave it before, if I get, they have it where the police are called to a place multiple times on a rental property and particularly where there's shootings going on or disorderly conduct and causing undue alarm to the public.
We can, if you want that, we can fix that.
Okay.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be Grant County on a sheriff's job? I mean.
Well, since you have a sheriff here, he might be able to explain that if we have an ordinance.
It's not our job to decide who.
I'm saying if you've got two shootings somewhere.
That's not what he's talking about. I think he went a little extreme when he said shooting. I'll give you an example, Phil Dalton back in the day, in his lease, if you had more than two negative police responses to your resident that weren't legitimate, as in, we were coming there because somebody was dying of a heart attack, if we came for disorderly fights, drugs, whatever it may be, you got the eviction notice. That, that's what he's talking about, yeah.
That's part of the news.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not talking about code enforcement, going and enforcing that stuff. It's just giving the landlord some teeth that, hey, now I've got to police you because I'll be in violation of a city.
Well, I'm sure you can see the confusion, I mean, you know.
He, he can't kick anybody out of their house.
No, it, it, it gives the landlord more teeth and it, again, it's an ordinance that somebody's gotta follow.
Alex, on page 19, section C. With the code enforcement officer may enter a building structure or premises. And it goes on further to say that you can obtain a search warrant for this purpose. I'm starting to wonder if we're overstressing bounds. Because number one, if it got to that point, and I see that the new code enforcement officer's hired, so, and I don't know what his background is or don't know a lot of detail of the past code enforcement officers. But if you're gonna go to that level, you would almost need a ex building inspector. You can't just put Joe Schmo in as a code enforcement officer and have him go check the stability of a foundation because he's not really gonna know. I mean, it's one thing, the grass is too tall, it's something else that, hey, you're structurally unsound.
So Todd, in, in response to that, what this provision does is it, it requires that you have to get consent to go into a person's home from the property. So the property owner would say, I don't believe I have any code violations, so therefore, come on in, right? If the, if the property owner doesn't want you in their, their home, then you would have to actually ask the court of conference jurisdiction, which would probably be the district court, for permission to access the home under the nuisance code, which would give them due process to come and say, hell no, you don't need to be in my house and here's the reasons why. So I don't believe that this in any way, shape or form is gonna infringe on their rights in a sense where they're gonna get due process. So we're not gonna have code enforcement officers knocking on doors and saying, I'm coming to your house. Exactly the opposite. In order to get into that house, you either have to be by way of permission or by court order. If that answers your question.
Well, it goes back to the bubble calls does not need to depend on specific knowledge of a condition, of a condition existing in a particular dwelling. So you could look at a house from the outsides, I don't think there's sewers running right or whatever, I need to come in and inspect.
A person, if somebody has the ability to say, no, you're not coming to my house, they can refuse entry. It's completely voluntary, they don't have to allow someone to go home unless they want to.
Alex, on the, on the fires, glad the chief just came in here. On the fire pits, what if you, would you be in violation if you got a burn permit from the fire department, the burn brush bomb that was bigger than this stated area?
If you guys only have an open burn, you can do it. Tell you what you want and I'll put it there.
I would say we need to put a situation in for an open burn.
Okay, who would you like?
Well, chief, what's the process of getting an open burn and be able to do it besides having water source and not be during a burn ban?
Well, you've also got two other concerns that the forestry department and EPA both require. One is that you have to be no, no more, correction, no less than 150 feet away from a tree line or stand of trees. And also it cannot be within 150 foot of a standing existing building. It also has to be manned the entire time from the time it's lit and that they must notify dispatch prior to lighting. But the tree line, stand of trees, that's a forestry and EPA thing that they'll get you.
So we probably just need to put some wording in there that we're in compliance with provision forestry.
That'd be a good idea, but I mean, if we're gonna do an ordinance that you're looking at, stating something that plain might not come, might not be a bad thing because EPA sometimes will come out with some unusual rulings that are for a season only. Forestry stays the same year to year, but that would take away any misunderstanding from what the county may set up or EPA.
And do you get a burn permit from you?
No. The burn permits right now, we do not have anything like that in Grant County. Right now, they've got to notify dispatch prior to lighting, but that's it, there's no notification.
And a source of water.
And a source of water. For the city, a burn permit would be nice, but since we don't have anything really on the ordinance right now, it's the source of water, it's got to be a structured, contained burn area. Those would be some things to word into an ordinance so that we don't have Markham Drive setting off 12 mattresses that they got out of apartments.
Anything else on the nuisance ordinance? I'm gonna go ahead and let Jamie come up and speak. Adam Whapman is not here tonight, we'll put, we'll put Jamie in there, we'll come back to the other ordinances and that way she's worked all day, she can do it.
My fourth meeting for the day, so. I'm here tonight to kind of give you all an update of what we're doing with the bicentennial or beautification project and trying to corral a community calendar all under one document so that we're all working from the same sheet of music. Next year, 2020, is Grant County's 200th anniversary, it's our birthday. It also happens to coincide with the 200th anniversary of Williamstown. And according to my research, those dates, at least for the county, fall on April 1st, which is April Fool's Day. I don't know if there's irony in that or not, but I found a little bit that we were founded on April Fool's Day, although maybe April Fool's Day wasn't an event back then, I don't know. But the judge came to me and said, would you help coordinate activities for the bicentennial? So we're doing something as a community as opposed to everybody doing a little something different. And I told him, I said, because it's one year only, yes, I will take that on. If it were a permanent thing, probably not, you're trying to kill me. But, so my thought behind it, I brought the mayor's and the judge together and we just kind of sat and had an initial meeting and I said, I would rather see us as a community host an event, each community hosts something that ties into the bicentennial as opposed to just one big event, because then the question becomes, where are you gonna have it? Why did you have it there? Why didn't this community get to do part of it? So let's just kind of spread it out. And with the season that we have with winter and things and, and all the other activities that we have, if we spread it out, there's a better chance that we're drawing people to our community. So having said that, Williamstown feels like that they're really good at parades. They feel like they've got the downtown for a parade. So they wanna have a harvest festival next year and they're gonna do that in May. They're not doing Derby Day next year because it's rained seven of the last eight Derby days, so it's a lot of effort and money that goes into something that doesn't get to come off. So they're gonna put that later in, in May. And then Dry Ridge feels like they're really good at fireworks. So they wanna have a 4th of July big blowout because 4th of July next year is on a Saturday. So they wanna have, to quote the mayor, he said that with enough money, he could rival the EBN fireworks in Cincinnati. I wanna see that in Dry Ridge if we can rival that. And so one of the ideas that I pitched to, to the mayor was, you've got Grant County Park here, it's got a perfect location for a music venue. So what if you did a bluegrass gospel concert and heritage festival there? And, and everything that we do next year as far as event wise, we're trying to tie back to the bicentennial in some way. We're slapping heritage on it, we're calling it bicentennial. I've got Mr. Mike Walters, who was the longtime art teacher at, at Williamstown Schools, he's retired now. He's working on a logo for us for the bicentennial. I'd like to get some signs that we put in the community, maybe some banners, maybe even stickers that we all send out next year on all of our letterhead and different things, just to show that there's community unity around our bicentennial, because it's a big deal. And so I know that, that nobody really accounted for any of that in their budgets. So tourism is willing to step up and put some money towards these events, but tourism is also looking for the city to put some skin in the game and say, yes, we're gonna contribute so much money to pull these off. Because if there's no money, then there's not gonna be an event because you've got to have some money to sound systems, bands, those kind of things. Really, the amount of money that you all put forth toward the event is up to the city council, that's your pleasure. I'm thinking if you did a, a couple of day heritage festival at the park, you had some bands and different things come in, we had maybe some folks come in and set up for salt or soap making demonstrations, chair painting, those kind of heritage type things. I'm thinking that you could probably pull that off between $8,000 and $10,000 would be a reasonable amount, I think. The other thing that, that we're doing and tying in with this, you've heard me talk to you before about a market on Maine. And that is a farmer's market that's kind of more amped than just a farmer's market. It's also artists, craftspeople, it would be music, it would be food trucks. And so that's a project that's, that's really something I've wanted to do for the last three years and it's just time to find, time to pull it off. And I, I really thought a lot about it and, and I, I really feel like 2020 is a good year to launch that. And I wanna do it, the, the concept behind the market on Maine was that it would start like in May and run through October. That's probably a bit much for the first year to try to launch something. That's probably a bit much for the first year to try to launch something from the ground up. So I got to thinking about the bicentennial, market on Maine, and I thought, well, what if we tried to do a Friday night event before every one of our big events feeds that event? And my concept with market on Maine is that it rotates. It's not located in just Williamstown. It's not located in just Dry Ridge. But Kritin shares as well. So I'm proposing to tourism that we do six of those next year. Two would be in Kritin, two in Williamstown, two in Dry Ridge. And we hire a local band to do that. We have a couple of local food trucks. We have a couple of vendors. And I'm not talking like the Sunglass Hut people. I'm talking real crafts and artist people. Something that there's quality to that. And my proposal to tourism is going to be that tourism pays for that and we call it market and music on Maine. Because 25 runs through all three and we've got great locations to do that. And some people have said, well, I think you're, you're going to not do as well because you're moving from place to place. I don't know that I agree with that. I think if you educate people from the get-go as to what we're doing, then they just get used to it. And I've talked to Georgetown quite a bit. I think Georgetown tourism does a lot of things right in the things that they do. Granted, they're 12 miles from Lexington and they got Toyota sitting there. I get that. But I still think they do a lot of things right. And she told me, when they started their concert series, which is kind of what this is based on, several years ago, if they had 50 folks show up, they thought they had a big turnout. That has grown into over three to 400 every time they do it once a month. And people love it. They look forward to it. They mark it on their calendars. And as you grow the event and you get more people there, you can get bigger name bands in. But you start small, you grow it small, and you grow it local. So I'm hoping that you all will see the value in that. That's not only giving our residents something to do, it's giving our tourists something to do. Because that's the one thing that we hear over and over and over. We've got to give them more stuff to do. We have to feed something to them besides the art. So I think this is a good way to launch that, get it going and see, see where it goes. And we can kind of experiment this first year with six of those and shore up what we need to. And for that project, I'm not asking the city council for anything. Tourism will pick up the funding and do that. I've presented that to them before, but I've not really formalized it. And at our next meeting, I will be doing that. But we have money set aside in the budget for a project like that. The other thing, and it kind of ties into what Joe Montgomery was talking about. We did a study, tourism paid two years ago for the University of Kentucky to come in and do the secret survey. And basically, they went through the community and looked at what is the first impressions that people have of each of our communities. And one of the things that really came out and stood out to me about that was when people drive from Kritin to Dry Ridge to Williamstown, they don't know which town they're in. There's nothing that designates, they know they're in Grand County somewhere. So I really thought a lot about that and I talked to the tourism director in Scott County. And they put aside a portion of their budget for a beautification project. Tourism pays, all those beautiful flowers and things that you see in Georgetown, tourism picks up the tab on those because it enhances the visitor experience. They can tie it back to tourism.